Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Bob Pearson, City Finance Director. And I want to thank you for your attendance here today because I think we have an item for you which is of critical importance to the city as we look forward to the general funds finances and to the streets funds finances. And this has to do with issues related to the city's utility users tax on telecommunications. And we want to go through the issues that we're facing for you and give you a little history of the city's utility users tax and then look at some options that we have to try to secure this vital revenue source that the city has relied on since the late 70s. So with that, I know we're scheduled for two hours. I don't think it will probably take. I think our presentation is probably 25 to 30 minutes, and then we'll hopefully have some discussion or some questions as we go through it. So the purpose of today's work session is to discuss the importance of the city's utility users tax revenue, to provide a brief history of our utility users tax, and then the meat of the presentation is to review for you the current legal and technological challenges that we're facing with our utility users tax ordinance, and then to talk about some next steps. So what is the city's utility users tax? It is a 6% tax on consumers' bills for the following utilities: water, natural gas, refuse, telephone, electric, and cable television. And the utility users tax provides --
I was in the name of the [inaudible].
Yeah. Provides over $13 million per fiscal year in total revenue. That was based on last fiscal year, 2007's audited financial statements. So it is a sizable chunk of money when you take all six of those utility categories combined. It is obviously at over $13 million, a very substantial revenue source for the city. This table presents the breakdown of that $13 million among the six utility categories that I just covered. And it is, as you can see, in declining order. The table is presented in declining order of dollar value. So of the $13 million, the largest segment of that is from the electric utility users tax, which is just short, or was, I should say, in fiscal year 2000, just short of $4.2 million. The second-largest piece of the utility user tax revenue, and the subject specifically of today's work session, is the utility users tax on telecommunications, which you can see is about $3.9 million, or again, was, last year. And you know, with revenue growth, all of these numbers will be slightly larger this current fiscal year than are presented here from the historical numbers of last fiscal year. Next, we have water, which was just shy of $1.5 million in total revenue, natural gas at 1.3, cable TV at $1.2 million, and lastly, trash refuse, just shy of $1 million, again, for the total of about $13.1 million last year. Now, on the telecommunications piece, we mentioned there, you can see it's about $3.9 million. Of the telecommunications revenue, it was just over $3.8 million last year. As with all of our utility users tax, the entire $13 million, 50% of it goes to the general fund, and 50% of it goes to the streets funds. Of the 50% in the general fund, that represents almost 2% of total general fund revenue. Now, again, I want to stress that this is just the telecommunications piece, you know, represents just about 2% of the total general fund revenue. So now, we're going to focus from this point forward on the telecommunications piece. And of course, as a critical general fund revenue, it supports general fund activities such as police and fire and parks and recreation. The streets fund, the 50% that goes to the streets fund, is an absolutely critical element of our streets program funding. Of the ongoing streets revenues now, and I exclude from that the large grants that we do get from time to time for things like bridge replacements and those things, the federal grants, I'm looking at ongoing revenue. The utility users tax on telecommunications represents almost 14% of the total ongoing streets revenue. So clearly, and that includes Measure D, so clearly, it's a significant portion of the money that we have available to us to fund our streets and roads and transportation The history of the city's utility users tax, it really was enacted in two steps back in 1970. The city council, by ordinance, adopted a 3% utility users tax on all six of the utilities that we currently continue to tax. And that 3% was all general fund revenue. In 1977, again, pri --
[inaudible]
Well, it was there, yeah? In 1977, the council by ordinance, again, this was pre Prop 13, doubled the rate increase, though the rate from a 3% tax to a 6% tax, with the entire additional 3% being dedicated to streets. And that is currently where we stand and have stood since 1977 and where we stand now in terms of the history of the tax. I'm going to turn this over to you. I want to introduce the council, to the council, Don Maynor, who's here today. Don is an attorney that is probably the preeminent legal expert in the state of California on utility users tax law. He has advised extensively the League of California Cities in the past, and has many, many cities that are clients, among them, the city of Santa Barbara, in which he advises us on utility users tax interests and represents us with the carriers, whether it be electric or gas, or in this case, over the last several years, primarily with the telecommunications companies, and has provided an invaluable resource to both the league and to his client cities in terms of helping smooth our relationship with the carriers and work on both policy and administrative matters. And Don has been kind enough to join us here today to talk about a couple of issues, the meat of the presentation regarding legal challenges and technology bypass. So with that, I'd turn it over to Don.
Yes, we did have cable TV back in the 70s. I could see it's going to be a problem. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm here to share with you a problem that really, a lot of cities, all the cities that have UUT ordinances face this problem. And it really relates to the fact of technologies change over the years. And so when the cities adopted their ordinances, UUT ordinances back in the early 70s, and Councilmember Williams won't know this, but there was a company called Ma Bell, and that was, we call that AT&amp;T now, and Ma Bell was the only company around. And so when the cities asked Ma Bell to collect the tax, he said, "Okay, we'll do it, provided that you follow the federal excise tax." They already had to collect the federal excise tax, so they said, "If you follow that same scheme, then we'll collect your UUT, and then it'll just be a different percentage." So that was the deal that was made. And the federal excise tax law was written, I think for the Spanish-American War or something, it goes way back. It was a very old law. And the IRS interprets it. And they did a good job applying the FET law to telecommunications over the years, but eventually, things changed, and cellular came along, and voice over internet, and all the new things. And that law just became outdated. And so there have been legal challenges, forced the IRS to come up with a restrictive ruling, and dramatically changed the scope of the tax. And since the cities refer to that federal excise tax law, the big issue is, does that mean the cities have to reduce their tax as well? So that's in litigation. Now, that's why we'll talk about that in a little more detail. The other problem, and we mentioned this, is there's all these new technologies. And if you have old language in your ordinances, at some point, you're going to have to modernize your ordinances. Well, there's this thing called Prop 218 that says you can't change your tax laws without a vote of the people. And so around the country, there's all kinds of states changing their taxation of telecommunications to deal with all the new changes. Because when you have a tax law, you want to treat everyone the same. It shouldn't be based on technology. And we would have done that in California probably five years ago, but for 218. So now, we're at a critical point where litigation is going on that may have an adverse effect on all these ordinances, and at the same time, technology bypass is going on. And Bob's been watching the revenues go down in the traditional telephone area. So you have two problems. And the question is, what can you do about it? We're going to talk about what other cities are doing. And so that's kind of an overview, so we're going to go into some detail on this. This one? Okay. I'm a lawyer.
Just do the left one.
Okay, got it. So as I pointed out, there's, and I'm not going to forecast the results of lawsuits, that's always a bad idea, but it is safe to say that there is a very significant risk as a result of litigation. And secondly, the bypass problem. What's the risk? Approximately $4 million a year. Your entire revenue is at risk because we're going to find out that the IRS greatly reduced the scope of the tax. And so what's remaining, it's really not fair to continue taxing the small portion of your public that really can't afford the new technologies. So here's the lawsuit problem. And this is just one of them, but this is the main one that everyone's been focusing on, and that's when we talked about the federal excise tax. The IRS came out with a ruling in the middle of 2006 as a result of losing a bunch of lawsuits brought by taxpayers. And the IRS came out with a very expansive ruling. Many of us didn't agree with how expansive they did this, but this is what they did. They said, "You can no longer apply the federal excise tax to anything but local exchange services." So that knocked out wireless, voice over internet, all sorts of things. And as a result, the California cities, if you had to follow that IRS ruling, would lose about 80, 85% of their taxpayers. So lawsuits were brought against the cities because they told the carriers, "Keep on collecting this tax. We're not going to turn off that tax until the courts tell us we're wrong on this," because the cities have different theories on why they should continue to be able to apply their UUT notwithstanding that ruling. So there's five lawsuits going on, two in the city of LA, one in the county, one in Long Beach, and Howard Jarvis filed a lawsuit recently in Sacramento. And these cases are at the trial court, and there could be a ruling later this summer, later this year, and a final appellate court decision could occur as early as late 2009. And if that happened, in the worst case, you would see your tax turned off virtually overnight, about 80% of it. There's other problems, by the way, with these old ordinances. This is just one legal issue. This is the worst one, but there's some other ones as well. So here's what your current revenue looks like. You can see a big chunk of it is cellular, a smaller amount is local exchange, and also some long distance. And that's what it looks like today. It keeps changing because of changes in technology. The potential impact is you lose all the cellular, you lose all the long distance, you even lose some of the local exchange because part of your local exchange goes beyond, is long distance. So you could see how much you would drop off. Huge amount. So some cities have said, "Well, we'll just clarify our ordinance and say we didn't really, we're not going to follow that IRS ruling." And that's been litigated. So some of the cities that have clarified their ordinance, that's in litigation. We'll find out soon enough. The problem is, even if you win the lawsuit, you still have an old ordinance. You still have outdated language. And there's a lot of things that would still be excluded. Also, if you lose, it may be more difficult to gain voter approval of getting that tax back. So that's a potential problem. On the technology bypass, these are some technologies that are bypassing your ordinance and have been because the federal excise tax doesn't apply, or does your current UUT ordinance apply. Private communication services, these are high-speed data lines a lot of companies use, T1 lines, T3 lines. And many of these states that are modernizing their definitions, their tax statutes are including that now. Voice over internet, people are familiar with that. IP video, that's the new kind of competition for the cable company, where AT&amp;T and Verizon provide, allow you to do video-like services used over the internet. It's a competitive cable TV. Arguably, that may not apply to your UUT because of outdated language. So those are some of the areas where you are currently exposed to technology bypass or you could. And 218, again, makes it difficult to update your ordinance. So what are the other cities doing? Well, whenever I meet with these, and I have 50 client cities, and I've been meeting with a lot of them, and when I meet with them in sessions like this, the first question I always ask is, "Do you really need that money, the $4 million?" Bob's already answered. He's already given me that word. "Don't even ask him that question." So if you need, if you don't need the money, then, you know, forget it. You'll lose, you know, if you lose the money, it won't be a great thing. But most California cities want those revenues. So the next question is, what can you do? And one approach that we've been seeing more and more cities do is adopting a modern communications tax ordinance. And what that ordinance does is it gets rid of the bad language that's the subject of litigation, and also makes very clear that everyone's to be treated the same regardless of technology. And so again, this is, these modern definitions are being used around the country in many other states, so we've been borrowing those definitions to create this modern tax ordinance. And it achieves tax equity. It makes sure that all the competitors in this rapidly expanding business are treated equally as well. So in order to do that, you have to adopt a modern ordinance. Key issues, some of you, probably none of you, may be familiar with the streamlined sales and use tax agreement, but that's an area having to do with sales tax over, online. Well, that's an area where all the states have been negotiating with the telephone industry because a lot of states impose a telephone tax. And so for the last four years, they've been sitting down working out acceptable definitions. So in these modern ordinances that I've been recommending, we're borrowing from those definitions because they're already agreed upon. They're very broad and technology neutral. So that means you could have an expanded tax base in Santa Barbara because frankly, your ordinance is quite old. You never did pick up interstate and international calls, and there's, about half the cities didn't do that. But that's not really fair because you don't want to treat some people differently than others. The new ordinances, pickup paging, that's not a lot of revenue. Private communication services, the T1, that's a fairly big deal. And IPTV, that's a new technology. This should be treated the same. So, and we make clear in these ordinances that we do not apply the tax to internet services. Those are in the nature of information services, so we even put in the ordinance digital downloads like music games, ringtones. That's off limits. And there's a federal moratorium, by the way, that also agrees on that. Oh, that's definitely taxable. Yeah. And so, no, no, no. The moratorium has never, has always acknowledged that voice service, including the voice over internet, is taxable. What they said they don't want you to tax is the DSL and cable modem part of it. So internet access. And so the voice over internet has always, and actually, the IRS was about to issue a ruling that the federal excise tax applies to voice over internet, and then all these things came unraveled. So what have other cities done? We treated it differently in different cities, and that's one thing I've learned, is every city's different, and they all have their unique issues, but most of them have been adopting a separate telecom video ordinance. They leave the gas and electricity alone. They put on the ballot a communications tax ordinance that resolves the FET issue and treats technologies the same. And then they adopt this model language, these model definitions. In some cities, many of them, reduce the percentage because you have a broader base. And if they want to make the change revenue neutral, they can reduce the percentage. You don't have to do that, but some are. And then they put it on the ballot. So I'm going to share with you the results because I think you can learn a lot from these results. We've had about 16 cities do this in the last year and a half, two years, and I think it's very instructive. The first one to do this was Compton, and these are all my client cities, and there's a story going on in each one of them. Compton was the first one to go, and they did it very quickly. I had asked them to wait about a year, and the mayor whispered in everybody's ears, "I would just like one of these presentations." And he said, "No, we're going to do it in four months." We had 72 hours to write all of this. So we got to put it on. In the ballot measure read very closely to the way the city of Los Angeles, you're probably familiar with the city of Los Angeles, recent success, "Shall the city reduce the percentage from 10 to 8.5 in Compton's case and adopt modern definitions so everyone is treated the same, 90%?" And so that was a very nice surprise. Daly City had to put their whole ordinance on because they had a legal problem with it. They got 70%. Menlo Park, brand-new ordinance, polled very well, but it just barely passed. Eureka had a sunset, just barely passed. Covina had a sunset, and it failed. So one of the things that we learned right away was that if you lose the tax, the sunset is where the tax goes away, and you want to get it back, that's hard to do. On the other hand, if you're dealing with an existing tax, as you're going to see, California cities have done very well. Yes?
To clarify, this is a 50% plus one. Ballot, because it's a general services tax, not special, that would need a 2/3 majority, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And all the cities had that option on whether they wanted to make it a special purpose, and they all opted not to. So Tulare went in the summer of '07. They followed the Compton approach, 85%. And in fact, all of these, and then the rest of these cities went in November, and they all reduced their percentage, other than Emeryville. Emeryville had to put their whole ordinance on, and Emeryville's a little bit unusual because of their weather, the makeup there. So the odds, you can see, they did very well. And a couple of those cities had a lot of opposition. Gilroy and Venetia had a lot of local opposition, newspapers, council members ran against it, and you can see the numbers. Okay? So then, with those results, Samore decided to go. And in the meantime, there was a lawsuit that came out, by the way, against the city of LA having to do with the wireless issue, and they lost. And when you read that appellate court decision, well, that didn't sound very good either. So cities don't do too well on these Prop 218 issues. So here's what happened a couple of weeks ago. Huntington Park went, they did a reduction, 79%. Richmond, they had to go out on an emergency basis because they couldn't wait till their next city council election, which was over a year away. 74%. San Bernardino, they reduced every one of their little utilities a little bit, and they got 80%. LA, 66%. Pasadena did not reduce, and they got a 58%. So that's where we are. We're going to have a lot more cities who are going to go out in this coming November, and Samore in June, after seeing the success. I think after they see Los Angeles, if LA can do it, we can do it, because that's a very difficult place to -- Yes?
Don, are there any of those cities that split theirs the way we split ours? In other words, half of ours goes to general and half of it goes to specific, which I believe leads us to having to do a 2/3 unless we change the dynamics of it? Are there any of these that --
No.
Either split theirs or went for a 2/3 specifically?
No, they were all --
All general.
All general fund going in, and none of them had that unique situation that you defined yourself.
Okay, so that's a problem.
Well, because, because there's nothing that restricts us from changing the amount going to streets in any given year or even any given council meeting, to continue the policy, to continue the status quo would only take us 50% because that's, it's, right now, it's a general tax. There's no, I mean, though we are using 50% for streets, that's not mandated by the charter or anything else. No, it's not by ordinance.
It's in our charter, isn't it?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Well, before we get into that issue, let me just finish. I only have two more slides, and I'm not going to answer that. We already worked out a deal on that one. So just to give you a feel for how a couple of different ordinances read, this is Emeryville. They had to put their whole ordinance on, and they did not reduce the percentage. So they went out and did some polling. A lot of these cities will do polling. Why would you do polling? Just to find out what's important in your community and how these different ideas are going to be responded to by the public. So in Emeryville, they did some polling. They became very clear, they did not have to reduce the percentage. And you can see, this is a ballot measure that was prepared by a polling election consultant, but they identified the things that were important and put it on the ballot, but there was no change in percentage. And then the other one is an example of, a very simple one, in Gilroy, and they did, you know, the reduction in percentage, and you can see how the language reads there. Compton and LA, they also have language about the definitions, treating everybody equally on a technology-neutral basis. But there's a lot of different approaches to it and on how you write the ballot language. But those are examples. So I'm back to Bob on this because I know you want to get in your favorite issue.
Unless there's any other questions.
Thank you very much, Don. Just want to recap that we're talking, of course, about the telecommunications UUT piece, and, you know, I hope in some small way, in just the few minutes we took to do that, we've conveyed a couple of things. One is, you know, as the finance guy, the importance of that $4 million of annual revenue, both to the general fund and to our streets program, significant percentages of each, and really significant portions of our core revenue sources for both the general fund and our streets program. And I think Don did a good job of explaining that even were there no potential legal threats to our telecommunications UUT, because of the explosive change in technology over the last five to 10 years, and because our ordinance was drafted back in the 70s and simply could not foresee some of the technological advances that we're enjoying these days, that technology is essentially bypassing our ordinance, and it means more and more of the technology is not taxable. And that's really not equitable, that people who can afford the modern technology would escape the tax, and the people who maybe can't afford all of that modern technology would be stuck paying on a smaller and smaller base, be stuck paying that tax. So there's really a tax equity issue, both from a taxpayer standpoint, and as importantly, in my opinion, the importance of treating all of the players in the technology feel the same. I mean, if we're having TV services that are being provided to most frankly of our residents by Cox Communications, and that's subject to the tax, why should somebody, someday when Verizon shows up in town with their FiOS system, which is what they call it, which is basically TV over a broadband fiber optic connection, they call it IPTV for Internet Protocol TV, why should that not be taxable when the Cox cable package is? So to be fair to Cox, it's fair to have a level playing field that anybody providing television service is, you know, going to be treated the same, so that there's not a competitive disadvantage over one form of technology to another. So that, so even in the absence of the legal challenges, and then, of course, there's the legal challenges, which Don, I think, did a great job of recapping, which we don't know how they're going to come out, and we certainly, I do, and I'm not the attorney, of course, but I'm not ready to acknowledge yet, I don't believe, that necessarily that the IRS's ruling means that the rug has been pulled out from under the legality of our utility users tax. But that's exactly, among other things, what the courts are being asked to decide now. And I think that the risk of waiting around for that decision is one that we have to seriously consider whether we're willing to take. So with all of that, then, we need to talk about what are our options going forward, and what are the constraints and factors that impact our options. And so I'm going to look at election considerations and next steps. And some of these, Councilmember Williams and the mayor brought this up, and I'm, again, I'm not a lawyer, and there are lawyers here, we have two of them here, that can maybe address if the questions get technical, but under Proposition 218, there are really two kinds of taxes. There's a general tax and a special tax. And I have always found it personally counterintuitive that a special tax, meaning you want to raise money for a particular purpose, and you're going to legally restrict that money for a particular purpose, should require a higher threshold than a general tax. But that's the Constitution of the state of California. Under the Prop 218 and the Constitution, a general tax requires majority approval, 50% plus one. And a special tax requires supermajority, 2/3 voter approval, 66.66667% plus one. And so that's, that's the framework within which the tax ballot measures are held here in California. Now, I want to add, under the general tax, that Prop 218 says that, in general, now don't use the word too much, but generally, a general tax can only appear on a ballot that is a regularly scheduled municipal election. So for us, our next regularly scheduled municipal election is November of 2009 because that's the next time that council seats are up for reelection or election. And so under Prop 218, that's the time to put up general tax measure on the ballot. A special tax measure can be put on any ballot. There is one caveat in Prop 218. Now, it says that if you want to put a general tax measure on a ballot date which is not a regularly scheduled municipal election, you can do that. But in order to do that, it requires a unanimous vote of the city council declaring a fiscal emergency. emergency. Now, that is exactly what, if you, if we went back and looked at some of those slides of the histories of the various elections dating back to 2006, you saw a couple of them, including the city of Los Angeles, that said "emergency." And those were the cities in which the city council felt that, in those cities at that time, that they did not want to or felt it was not in the city's interests to wait until the next regularly scheduled municipal election. And they passed by unanimous vote, declared a fiscal emergency, and had the ballot measure placed on a, on a, on a ballot date other than a regularly scheduled municipal election. So that's the environment in which we're looking at. Now, under election considerations, our current UUT, fifty percent is to streets, is to general fund, and that's clearly a general tax. Fifty percent of it goes to the streets fund, and now, this is an interesting situation. That could be construed to be a special tax. I'm not, again, an attorney, and I'm not certain it is. It's an interesting situation, because our utility users' tax was approved prior to even Prop 13. And so I don't know legally whether that is something that on any given Tuesday the council could amend that ordinance and, and, uh, change that ordinance section, whether the courts would consider that now currently to be a special tax or not. But I do know that if we were considering a ballot measure to reauthorize our current telecommunications utility users' tax, that that could be placed on the ballot as a general tax, and that would be a majority. Now, if the council decided, we could also restrict the entire thing, put it on the ballot as a special tax, and, and then it would be subject to two-thirds voter approval. So those are our options. And all I'm trying to do at this point is lay out options. I'm not here to recommend anything at this point. Well, almost nothing. November 2008 general tax ballot would require, as I said, the emergency declaration unanimously. So the election considerations, one question would be if, should we consider moving forward with a reauthorization and a modernization of our utility users' tax ordinance on telecommunications? And if, if we should, should we consider November 2008 as a time to do that? That would require decisions in June or July at the absolute latest, because we have to have the material to the county by, I think, late July, all the, everything, all the ballot measure, the language, all of those things. So clearly, decisions would be required well prior to that. If we choose to do that in, in November of 2008 or some other time, should we do a general or special tax? And should we consider the fact that under, as Don said, under the model ordinance, which would be the starting point for, for our, our recommended revision to the telecommunications UUT, it does broaden the base, because it captures technologies which are currently, have been, have bypassed our ordinance. If that is going to result in a broadened base, should we consider reducing the rate to shoot for revenue neutrality, or should we not? And that's certainly a, a decision which would, I think, require some analysis and certainly some policy discussion on the part of the council. So with that, I, I think that the one thing we would recommend is that, I think that staff feels that we should at least consider the possibility, the advisability of proceeding to put something on the ballot in November 2008. And if the council is so inclined to consider that at least further, to consider that option further, then staff would recommend that we refer the model ordinance to the ordinance committee for review, and that we could also refer to the finance committee, the financial considerations, which would include a look at the impact fiscally and financially of broadening the base, whether it would be in our interests to consider lowering the rate on the telecommunications piece or not. How much broadening the base might generate us an additional revenue is not a science. We can't exactly tell you, but we could certainly, with Don's help, provide some sort of guidance on that. And then, from there, I, we would expect that the matter would come back to council, and the council then could consider the reports from both the ordinance committee and the finance committee, and, and then have the policy discussions on where do we go from here? So...
Should we then, should we right now, I see where, where we should head, that's, that's clear, but should we decide whether we want to put it on, if we, if we could find an emergency, to put it on this November? Do you want us to talk about that first, or...
Well, I, I mean, again, from a staff perspective...
Yeah.
We're not asking for any decisions or, or even direction necessarily from council other than what you see here.
Yeah.
I think, obviously, if the council is inclined to want to discuss some of these policy issues at this point, that's why we scheduled two hours.
Right.
But...
Okay.
But I would say that, you know, I, I think that we feel, that staff does, that many of these issues are technical enough that maybe they would be better dealt with...
Committees.
In the committees.
Yeah.
And keep in mind that by the time this piece of it got to finance committee, the finance committee will be right here in this room and will be televised, so...
There you go.
Both ordinance committee and finance committee would be being televised at that point in time, so the public would have a, a window onto both sides of that.
Right, right. Okay. Okay, so we have, anybody have any discussion ideas? Mr. Horton?
It, it seems to me that that amount of money is sufficiently important in view of possible decrease in revenues, that we'd need to take a look at it. And I, I don't see how we could avoid at least examining it in committee. So, and as Chair of Finance, I, I think it's something that we need to, we need to address. I don't know what the outcome of that deliberation would be, but I think it's, I don't think we could, there's no way I could justify not looking at that, that large amount of money and that importance of that money to the city. So I think we should look at it.
There's also another part to it, and that's the political decision, you know? We've got a presidential election, a lot of people are going to be voting. We also have Measure D, which is, I think, going to be Measure A instead, they're thinking. They're flipping around the letters, but, so, we have some other considerations too besides that, but I, I, I think it would be good for us to talk about the finances of it and the ordinance part of it, so... Mr. Williams?
My, my feeling is that we are on the verge of a, of a fiscal emergency, given the budget figures that the city administrator presented to us at the last special meeting. We, between the shortfall for this year and the expected shortfall for next year, we have substantial chances that essential services of the city would be threatened, that meaning parks maintenance, the recreation programs that we're so proud of, that may be benefiting children's lives and giving them a route besides through gangs, and, and then, of course, essential services like police and fire. And, and I think that it would be, my gut would be to address it sooner rather than later, and to look at an election like this November is when the, when the vast majority of the people who will be required to pay the tax are voting. If twice as many people are going to vote in the 2008 November elections than 2009 November elections, then we should give a voice to those people who will end up being, paying that tax, and by putting it on the ballot sooner rather than later.
Okay. Mr. ... Well, I have Mr. House, and then you can talk.
Okay, well, I just, I just want to lend my voice in agreement that it's worth our consideration, and, and I think there's equity pieces on both sides of the equation. One has to do with, with the old, with the old language that we have right now. It appears that those who are, who perhaps don't have the new technology are going to be the only ones left paying the tax. And on the other hand, those, those services that are, the ones that could be diminished could also affect them the most as well. So it's kind of like, I really think we need to take a good look at this. And I have a question for staff, and perhaps for Mr. Wiley, and it has to do with, where in the process do we wrestle this issue of, of these, our split that we have now, as it is being thought of as either a special tax or not, or whether we are considering putting forward a, just a general fund measure? Where, is that, is that done in ordinance committee as a, as a discussion that comes forward as a recommendation to council, or is that something that's decided ahead of time as a legal matter, or what, how do, how do we wrestle that one to the ground?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I, I think we would probably be inclined to discuss it at both the ordinance committee and the finance committee, because as, as the mayor just mentioned, there, there are legal and political aspects of this, if you will, and politi, by political, I mean, what's the best way to present this to the voters? I, I think ultimately, this is going to be a clearly, a critical decision for the city council. And let me add with respect to beginning to answer this question, because I don't know that I can actually answer everything right now, but at least for myself, in thinking about this previously, I think it's important to, to see what we're doing here, what we're considering here as a clean slate. We're moving forward with something, and that can be something very, very clear-cut. It can be clearly a general tax or clearly a special tax. And from my perspective, as a municipal lawyer, as the city's lawyer, that's my inclination to be, to take one of the black or white options and say, "I can answer your question, and I know what a judge will say. That was a general tax, and we got it approved. End of story." If we started getting retrospective and tried to draft something that kind of grafted what we did previously, set the non-clean slate approach, I'm not sure I'd know the answer. There might be legal theories, and there might be even some pretty convincing legal theories, but my inclination is, I'd prefer to avoid having to do something that we have a strong theory that we're okay. You know, as, as Mr. Pearson mentioned, our existing earmarking dates from 1977. It's pre-Prop 13 even. And I don't think people know the answer yet, what, what, what happens legally when you tinker with a pre-Prop 13 ordinance. I don't know that many cities have ever tried that, and I suspect fewer cities have ever had litigation over it. But it's kind of, you would take 218 and say, "All right, now, does 218 apply to changes to an old ordinance?" And just even raising the question, to me, I don't think there are clear-cut answers. So again, just to finish up, I would prefer that we take one of the black or white options, clearly do a general tax or clearly do a special tax.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiley. And maybe for staff, at some point in the process, just maybe, as kind of the geeky side of me, I'm kind of curious as to what we're actually measuring. I mean, in the, in the old way, I could imagine that we're measuring numbers of minutes on a telephone line, you know, where the line is held open. But in a day and age where people leave their computers on, and it just sits there on a supposedly, you know, cached on a website, what are we measuring, you know, and in what kind of measurement increments? And I'm just kind of curious about that and where we would discuss that, too. Thank you. Yeah, and if you have, if you want to enlighten us a little, it'd be kind of interesting.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I just, I want to be very clear on one thing, because oftentimes when citizens, taxpayers hear this discussion, they become concerned that somehow we're talking about taxing internet access. And I know that Mr. Maynard said this before, I want to reiterate it, that, that our ordinance would not propose to tax internet access. Number one, the federal law currently has a moratorium which has been in place for, I don't know, ten years maybe now, that keeps getting renewed, and it was just recently renewed for a period of four or five more years. Even in the absence of the federal legislation, our proposal, this model ordinance, would not tax internet access. It would tax the transactions that happen to take place over Internet Protocol technology, whether that be phone service. So you're still taxing, you know, if, if someone with Vonage, for example, pays $23 a month for their unlimited calling plan on Vonage, that's what would be taxed, the $23 a month. If someone has a cellphone package that includes 1,000 minutes for $40 a month, that's what would be taxed, the $40 a month. But I just want to be very clear, I don't want anyone to be alarmed that we're going to tax email or internet access or those kinds of things, because that is clearly not the case.
Thank you so much for clarifying that, and that may not be the last time you need to clarify that.
I, I'm sure it won't be. And if I might, just one more thing, while it's certainly a decision of the council, I think, I would say that, as my slide earlier pointed out, that, you know, if you have a general tax, there's nothing that precludes the council from saying, "We're going to allocate a portion of it here, and we're going to allocate a portion of it there." And the portion of it that happens to be allocated now to the streets fund is half of it, and, and I think from a staff perspective, and I think that the council agrees, that whatever results we came up with, I, you know, the fact is, we saw that this telecommunications piece of the utility tax represents almost 14% of our ongoing streets revenue. So it is a critical component of our streets and transportation funding, so... Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Thank you. This is, this is an incredibly, incredibly complicated issue, and I had the honor of sitting on a task force about a year and a half or so ago with, with Mr. Maynard and a whole bunch of people from the League of California Cities, and it's hard enough to get your arms around it. So I think there are a couple of things. One is that I agree with Mr. Horton, that the financial consequences here are, are very in need of a thorough review, not only with respect to the broadening aspect of it, but also whether or not there's a reduction in the tax requested if we go to the ballot, because any emergency that we declare would be, for the most part, grounded in financial considerations. So the financial analysis is absolutely paramount, that we get our arms around exactly what that means. I, I'd like to, to just really go back to something that Mr. Wiley said versus the special and the general. In this issue, I do think that November is probably a place that we would like to go, because the vast majority of people, huge turnout of whatever demographics, but a huge turnout of the folks are going to be voting. And I think that's important when you're asking them to consider a, a tax issue. But I think we need to be really very clear with the voters. As, as Mr. Pearson just said, this is not about taxing the internet. We're precluded by Congress, we can't do that anyway. But there, there is an awful lot of area here that is ripe and rife for, for misinterpretation, misunderstanding, being misconstrued. And so we need to not get cute. We need to be very clear about exactly what it is we're asking the folks. And if it is going to be a general tax, we need to make it very clear that although we would like to very much continue to fund streets and fund other priorities, that really on any given Tuesday, that could change. And they need to understand that that really is the case. Now, my preference is to keep it the way it is, but I don't see going forward how we're going to be able to do that. So we need to come into a new world, but this is a convoluted issue with a lot of players, and we need to be absolutely clear. But the financial analysis is paramount, and I think the place to start. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. I agree with a lot that's already been said, so I don't need to repeat it. I, I think emphasizing fairness, I think, is important in terms of who would be taxed, whether things change or remain the same, as was mentioned, fairness of, of which entities would be taxed versus others in the level playing field, as you mentioned, Mr. Pearson. The timing of it, I, I guess one question is, the, the litigation that's happening, is there any particular timeline of when you think there might be any rulings about that?
That's a good question.
Very good question. These are all five trials. It's hard to know exactly when, because when you're in trial, it's, it can become a, a trial on the facts, or if there's no factual issue, the judges will get a brief in, and I'll get your ruling in 60 days. So we don't know how the judges are going to deal with it in these cases, but they could have, I, I expect a ruling sometime this year, probably towards the end of the summer. There could be a final appellate court decision in 2009. That's, that's the reason why you don't want to wait till 2009, because if you lose the tax, the election consultants will tell you it's entirely set of circumstances.
Right.
So you have a window of opportunity that really is this year, 2008.
Okay. And I think just to underline what Ms. Falcone was saying about trying to keep things as clear as possible and not to relate to more confusion, if we wait much longer beyond November 2008 with lawsuits and we could lose something, and then that's just going to make things so much more confusing to explain to voters of what it is that we had, that we lost... had, that we lost, that we want to get back, as opposed to continuing and just clarifying language that's been in place for decades. And so, and, and a ruling coming down in the summer may help or hurt us depending on what the ruling says with the ballot in November, but still, I think, important because it ties into the same issue. And then finally, in terms of where the funds should go and should half go to streets or funds, I'd be curious to see as we move into this analysis if other cities had a sort of advisory vote that went along with the ballot initiative that would say, "If this should pass, what would be your top, would streets be, you know, should we, you know, should we consider putting half of it into a streets, in, in for street maintenance," or something like that, that wouldn't require us to do that. But I have seen that happen before in other counties where it was a general tax that required a majority vote, but also that came with it some voter feedback of where they see the priorities of some of that is. And, and maybe that works and maybe that doesn't, I'm, I'm not making that determination. But if other cities have done that to help, that might help future councils determine, well, the voters have said, "We want to keep half of it in basic infrastructure of our streets, and so we've heard from the voters that way." That might help somehow, without going into a special tax scenario. So, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Maynard?
On those types of questions, sometimes it's helpful to get the advice of election, I'm not an advocate of election consultants, but that's what some of the cities have done to get some sense of what is going to work, how does the community, how they respond to some of these issues, and it helps sometimes make a better decision. Los Angeles, when they initially polled, they didn't have a percentage reduction, looked terrible. And then they went out and polled with percentage reduction, you know, it was totally different, and that's what prompted them to go out. So sometimes, particularly have more complicated questions and issues, a little bit of polling can help you get a sense of how people are going to respond to them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could add on the Councilmember Snyder's initial question about the timing of the legal decisions, it's also important to keep in mind that, that a trial court decision, essentially a superior court decision out of LA County or out of Sacramento County is not going to tell us a whole lot, because it's not going to be binding on our superior court and, or really binding outside of that particular case. The reasoning of that particular judge may be helpful or not helpful, but, you know, whether it's positive or negative for cities, it's, it's not going to tell us that much. It's really, would be the court of appeal decisions. And in my experience on, on appeals, if there was a trial court decision this week, we wouldn't get the appellate decision for about a year from now. And that's, that's, we're probably not going to get a decision this week, it's probably going to be a few months.
Right. I appreciate that because that also lends into the confusion factor. If you get all these different court appeals and decisions, and it goes one way and then the other way, and so how does that relate to what we're doing? So in some ways, the sooner we do this, the less complicated it could be.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody, anybody else? Mr. Armstrong, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
I think our plan would be is, if Mr. Pearson indicated, go to the ordinance committee, Lance and I, we'll carry the discussion, I think we'll go to the finance committee pretty quickly and get your input as to what data you would like to have.
Yeah.
So that then we can come back and give you that data. And I guess we probably, you know, I think our inclination is to at least talk about during some polling and find out, you know, on these issues. I think it can be at a relatively small cost about whether or not to investigate some of those things.
Yeah. What is that, Mr. Maynard?
So that's our inclination is to, is to look at doing that, but I think first we'll go to the ordinance committee pretty quickly and get some input as to what data you would like to have. I think with the, with the ordinance committee, we'll bring you the model ordinance and then see if you want to tweak it. I think that's probably an easier process because I, I think we're going to recommend we stick as closely as we can to what the other cities have done, rather than try and do some special parts of it, just so that'll withstand any court challenge.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I just would, that, that last point about the ordinance committee, you know, in this business, when there's a model ordinance, of course, we kind of got in this problem in 1970 with a model ordinance, but...
But that wasn't so...
But in, in discussing, discussing this with Mr. Maynard, it's clear that he has worked particularly closely with the carriers on this model ordinance. And so, as Mr. Armstrong mentioned, this probably won't, hopefully won't be the sort of discussion at the ordinance committee where we're forced to draft new things. It'd be more getting a handle on, understanding it and making sure that it's, it's...
Okay, okay, I hear, I hear. I'm not going to try to change it much.
But there may be some specific things about how Santa Barbara does business that we, we can look at, but particularly getting the public involved in understanding the ordinance, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's important. Yes, Mr. House?
One of the things that I, I think is going to be really important throughout the whole process though, is to have a really, and maybe finance committee is the place where this can really come to light, is to, is to have a real understanding of the impact of us not taking action on the community. I think that's really a very, very important part of, of the whole package. It's not just to, it's not, not just because we feel like we'd lose money, no, it's because there are very important results that, that are in the form of our streets and programs and things that people really cherish that could be lost. So I, I hope that gets discussed thoroughly at every point. Thank you.
That would be the note. Okay. Okay. Okay, anything else? Do we need to vote to send it to, I don't think we do, because this is a work session and we don't usually vote, so. Okay, anything else? Okay, good. Well, thank you very much. Good, good discussion.